It's that way, yeah. I turned it on.
Thank you.
Yeah. A little ago?
Not yet. You get a couple of laughs.
I see you.
Thank you.
I was playing. Thank you. Good job.
I'm going to watch the video. So you're talking with her?
I just want to know what the show will be. I can tell him something.
Okay, okay.
It's a pleasure. Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you. Great. You should hear other guys or somebody else. Are you using your own? Although right now, right?
I'm signing the shield. Once it should be a summary and once it should be anything. Yeah, well, three is for Thursday.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Sorry, we were having a few technical difficulties. We've got them all worked out and we're ready to go. If you wouldn't mind joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to, well, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 and then I will entertain a motion to accept this evening's agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Motion by Kelly, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad, all those in favor, are there any questions? All those in favor signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Dr. Parker, do we have anyone signed in this evening?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much for coming. It's great to have a full house. I love it. Our next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a public hearing for an amendment to the 2025 bus replacement plan. If you're interested in speaking during tonight's hearings, please make sure you have provided your name and address. After a presentation by the administration, there'll be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the plan. Mr. Greg Elkins, Corporation CFO, will now present the 2025 bus replacement plan amendment.
Thank you very much. Notice of this public hearing was posted as legally required on March 10th, 2025, at 11:32 a.m. to the Department of Local Government Finance Gateway website and to the school corporation's website pursuant to Indiana Code 20-4-18. Following this public hearing, the officers of Mount Vernon Community School Corporation may adopt the proposed plan as presented. The corporation will be making a purchase for one 2020 Thomas bus, sale price of $55,000, a 2013 and 2014 Chevy Express buses, total sale price of $17,000, all from Curlin Bus Supplier. The corporation is required to list bus inventory, which I will do right now, and anyone that really, really wants to come up and see that spreadsheet is more than welcome to. We'll be submitting this to the state and there are three new bus purchases. And we're required to keep this inventory for a rolling five-year period. If the proposed plan is adopted by resolution tonight, that resolution will be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance per Indiana Code 20-40-18-9, Section D. I can summarize that for you. Anytime we add or subtract from our bus roster, we have to have a hearing and a board resolution. So that's why we're doing this tonight.
Very good. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak regarding the 2025 bus replacement plan? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to the approval of the public hearing action items. Mr. Elkins?
Yep, so with that, I'd ask the board for your consideration and approval of the attached resolution, which signifies your acceptance of the amended bus plan.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the amended 2025 bus replacement plan as presented.
Okay, motion by Kelly, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan, any discussion or questions for Mr. Elkins?
Are the two Chevy Expresses yellows or whites?
Yellows.
Fourteen plus or under fourteen? Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions? All those in favor signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Dr. Parker?
Thank you much. First up is our Director of Community Relations, Maria Bond, for the Good News Report.
Good evening. We most definitely have some great news this evening. I wanted to share, first of all, congratulations to all of our building-level teacher and Staff of the Year recipients. I think I shared that in an earlier month's meeting. But a special recognition goes out to our district teacher of the year, Yifan Lin, from Mount Vernon High School, and our district staff of the year, Melissa Montag, who's representing the administration through the Technology Department. Many thanks also to the Mount Vernon Education Foundation for hosting an outstanding gala, and thank you to Rene Oldham and the Mount Vernon Education Foundation Board, volunteers, and everybody who made this happen. The event successfully raised funds to provide 1,000 books to Mount Vernon Intermediate School, along with additional educational grants. In collaboration with Nine Star Connect, the Mount Vernon Education Foundation and Mount Vernon Middle School proudly celebrated the launch of the esports program at the middle school. And a grant of approximately $28,000 helped launch this amazing activity. The program is off to a phenomenal start with both middle school teams currently ranked number one and number two out of 25 middle school teams and 89 players statewide. Several Mount Vernon High School FCC LA students participated in the Indiana State Leadership Conference, earning top honors such as gold in the lesson planning event, silver in both the food marketing and early childhood healthy snack events. Mount Vernon Middle School proudly hosted its 50th Annual Talent Show. They showcased an array of student talent in categories such as vocal performance, instrumental music, piano, dance, variety acts, and a group numbers. Mount Vernon High School Theater proudly brought the magical tale of Cinderella, Rodgers and Hammerstein's Cinderella, to life on stage, delighting audiences with heartfelt performance, stunning set, and a gifted cast that captured the essence of that timeless story. In sports, we wanted to share that Mount Vernon High School Boys Basketball made an impressive run to semi-state, ultimately facing off against Jeffersonville, who went on to win the state championship. Luke Erdel, who's a 6'3" junior point guard, was selected as one of 18 players named to the Indy Star Indiana Boys Junior All-Stars for 2025, which is a notable honor. Also at Mount Vernon High School, student Ahmed Saleh earned second place in the 3,200-meter run at the indoor state championship, setting a new indoor school record with a time of nine minutes and, yeah, nine minutes and nine seconds. Yeah. Under Community Connections, we wanted to share that we proudly recognize the fourth cohort of Mount Vernon ambassadors on their graduation. This group of 21 engaged community members participated in eight in-depth sessions throughout the year to gain insight into Mount Vernon's operations and programming. As informed advocates, these ambassadors now serve as knowledgeable resources within the community, and it was just a wonderful group to get to know. In January, Superintendent Dr. Parker and Assistant Superintendent Mr. Smedley visited Zoe's Place Child Advocacy Center to deepen their understanding of the critical services provided to children throughout Hancock County, including many of Mount Vernon students. Moved by the center's mission and impact, they returned inspired to take action and rally support for the organization. We're proud to share that collectively, Mount Vernon staff rallied to raise $1,500 in donations to support Zoe's Place. Under donations, I have a few people I'd like to recognize. Is Tom Bunnel here? Okay, well, I'm going to definitely share this as well. The Fortville branch of the Veterans of Foreign Wars recently contributed $1,000 to the MVCSC Angel Fund, which supports students with overdue lunch account balances. This donation was accepted in the consent agenda in March, but we're honored to welcome and thank Tom Bunnel. Regarding Fortville American Legion Post, do we have Nikki Cook, Brenda Zeiss, Jay Zeiss here? Okay, well, we're going to still recognize them anyway. The Fortville American Legion Post 391 has generously donated $1,000 to the Angel Fund as well. Their donation is included in the consent agenda tonight, which will follow the conclusion of the four reports being shared this evening. Should the board vote to approve the consent agenda, this generous gift will be formally accepted. This marks the American Legion's fourth donation this year, totaling $4,500 in contributions. So we extend our sincere appreciation to the American Legion for their ongoing support. And then last but not least, we do have some exceptional guests with us here tonight. I'd like to invite the Mount Vernon High School Gold Intensity Dance Team and Ellen to come on up. I'm going to share a little bit about them. They continued their legacy of excellence by winning state in the Varsity Palm Division AA for the fourth consecutive year. A recent publication praised the team for their precision and creativity, noting that their performance captivated judges and spectators alike and demonstrated both technical excellence and deep passion for dance. And I know we have a video to watch, and I believe Dr. Parker wanted to say something. And ladies, can I have you guys back up? Because my thought is that we could have you guys down here and then our hope is to see the board members behind you.
There you go.
So can you ladies sit all the way down the front row? And then the back on your knees? Perfect. Are you ready for the video too?
Let's do the photos if they're there and then the ladies can watch the video with us after the photo. How's that sound?
Okay, sounds good. All right, I've got the five board members in here as well. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Ellen.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
There you go. Yep, very good. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
I'll put this back, I promise.
I know, girls, I always enjoy watching you guys at the games when you come. It just makes halftime so much better, so.
So ladies, why don't you get where you're comfortable? And if you want, we're on to the film. And we'll play your video for everybody on the screen so we can all watch our video. As many times as I've practiced to do this video to work, I think I could do the routine.
Okay, we want to see that.
Mount Vernon High School, you may take the floor in AA Palm Competition. Mount Vernon High School.
How many seniors are there? Are there any?
So we've seen a couple of you here before.
Wow.
It's amazing.
What a run.
All the way through. Oh, that's so awesome.
You know, it's like not winning the state championship, huh?
Right.
And then I want to know your secret, how do you keep smiling through the whole thing? Like, I would be dead, of course, but.
I'm out of breath watching you.
I like it.
You do good. You do good. I'm out of breath watching you. It's so impressive.
Well, I just want to say congratulations again and thank you for sharing your talents with us. All the time you get to perform. We watch you and we're amazed at your excellence. And it takes a lot of hard work to do what you do. And I know you're wore out when you finish practice in a performance like that, but it's just outstanding and we very much appreciate it. I also want to recognize your coaches. Ms. Ellen, what an amazing job you do. I know you help with some of the choreography as well, and I don't know who choreographed this entirely, but it was an amazing, you did your, all yourself. That was an amazing routine. I mean, yeah, let's give Coach Ellen. Totally cap, so we're really proud of you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I love your T-shirts. Back to back to back to back. I love it.
Well, we have a really exciting rest of the board meeting. If you can just sit right there. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, congratulations.
Seth, I think I got it right. Is that? I know. You're young. Probably.
Probably right.
Okay, absolutely.
Next reports, I'm going to ask our curriculum director, Dr. Shipley, to kick those two off for us, please. Dr. Shipley?
Thank you very much. We have some friends from our libraries here tonight. Our first report is for the Vernon Township Public Library, and I'd like to welcome Ashton Bennett, the director, to come up and share about the Vernon Township Library.
Hi, everyone. As Scott said, my name is Ashton Bennett. I am the Vernon Township Public Library Director. I came to Vernon Township in January 2024, so I'm excited to share a review with you of like something that I was actually got to be part of. So when I came and presented with you guys last time, it was all stuff I was learning. So this time, you know, we got to be, I got to be engaged in all of these efforts. So with me today is Julie Wilson, our library board president, and one of the appointments from your board. So we do have three appointments to our library board from Mount Vernon School, so I wanted to share that as well. So first highlight, it's always good to see library card increases. So this year, from April last year, when I gave you this report, to April this year, we did see 25% increase in our library card holders. So I'm always, I always think visuals are cool, so the map you see is kind of what we share to show like our little plots of community members that have cards. All of Vernon Township is served by our community, so towns of McCordville and Forivo. Any of the outlying areas in Hancock County, which Dave will talk about too, or the little ones up there by Pendleton are part of our reciprocal borrowing agreement. So we do have a reciprocal agreement, which means that any of our cardholders in Vernon Township, as long as they have a home library card, can go to Pendleton and can go to Hancock County, get a card and use those libraries as they would if they were residents. The same happens vice versa. So any of them can come to our library and use our services as well. And then all of the dots outside of the county, we have some Fishers, some Pendleton. Of course, we're kind of on the edge of Madison County here, Hamilton County here. So we have a lot of residents in those areas that choose to purchase cards. So we do have a plaque card that they can use any library in the state and then a non-resident card. So our fee for that is $35. So we do have a lot of Fishers families who choose to purchase that since we're really close to them. So also along the lines of visual, I think I showed this to you guys last year, but we did do our first-ever custom library cards. And so it's really cool for like all of the families to get a card with our logo on them, our Path to Totality, our Eclipse card's still really popular. And then our Friends of the Library has their own custom card as well. And then we do have all of the Student Educator cards, so Mount Vernon Schools, regardless of their home address, they get to have access to our library as well using that card. And last year, I didn't share this with you guys. I apologize, I was still learning too. But we are part of the Evergreen Indiana Consortium. There's 133 member libraries in the state, and we basically resource share so that we can use our funding towards materials that really, our community really wants and needs. And then all of the kind of niche or things that may not fit in our library space, we can transit from other libraries. So just us, we do about 15,000 material transits a year. But all of our cardholders have access to 8 million items. So basically, anything in those member libraries, we can access. Our team and staff can access and pull those. If they place a hold, our cardholders will come, pick it up. They don't really see the difference. We just check it out to them and they bring it back to us and we send it back to the member library. So it's a really cool sharing resource. In addition to that, if they have, I'll go back. You saw the little library logo on our cards, the little circles there for Evergreen. They can walk into any Evergreen library and use that card just like they would if they are resident at that place. And then the same for returns. So they can return items from any Evergreen library. We have a lot of families who actually work in Newcastle but live in our area, and so they'll pick up materials from Newcastle, drop them off, and vice versa. So it works really well. And I apologize, I didn't share that with you last time. We do have a Resource for Teachers page on our website as well. So I work with Allison Zelnick, the other media specialist and a lot of your teachers, to provide books for their book reports, to get book club books, so multiple sets that they're using in their English classes. And our transits for Evergreen really work really well for that too. But right from our webpage, they can request a library card and come in and pick it up. They can request to schedule a visit to our library as well. And then they can actually have that custom collection. They fill out a spreadsheet. We'll go and pull materials, let them know what we have, what we need to transit, and then they'll approve those as well. And of course, all the fun stats. So we did have an increase in library visits. We had an increase in reference interactions last year. So we're excited to see patrons coming and asking us questions, finding resources for them, talking about all the things that we have access to with their library cards. And one of my things that I'm passionate about is outreach and programming. And so just some fun photos from the stuff that we did this year. We did host 265 programs, which is an increase from last year. We had about half that number. And then 5,622 total in attendance. We also added a bunch of partnerships for programming. We've partnered with Ivy Tech. If you follow our social media, they brought robots and drones. I have a really good partner. I used to work for Ivy Tech before I went into public libraries. So they have some really cool equipment that they have access to that they want to share with the community and can bring to us that we don't have access to, of course. We also partnered with the Fire Department to come and do a storytime during Fire Safety Week so that they could get to know the firefighters, any mess that might show up at their house. And that situation is a little scary. So if they're reading books to them, it helps build that relationship. And in the summer, we did a bunch of, we did an outdoor survival class for teens. It was super popular at the parks. We've done painting. And we've partnered with an animal rescue, which has grown in popularity as well. So Happy Hoppy and Safe is an exotic animal rescue. So they bring some friends that have unique needs that have been part of hoarding situations or something like that. And then they talk about the elements and resiliency that the animals had, and then hopefully that'll correlate. We tie that to some books and then correlate that to hopefully some of the resiliency that they'll be able to have as they go on as well. So focusing on the future, as we see an increased number in residential developments, families moving to this area, our focus is to meet those needs outside of our library walls. So because we have limited space and not everyone knows all the resources that the library provides, our goal is taking that on the road, kind of. So we have started library days at apartment complexes, at senior living facilities. We attend community events in both towns. Here at the schools, we do after-school programs. So our initiative is really to be outside the library this year. And also focusing on the idea that we're more than books. So our printing, faxing, scanning, all of the kind of tech help that we provide, just the space in general where people can come and sit and focus and read and work. And then, of course, we're always promoting literacy development. All of our programs focus on those elements, especially our early literacy. In exploration, we started a little learner's sensory-based program that's just experimental so that young families can experience a mess and kind of experience the world without having to do it in their homes. And of course, the librarians get to have fun and clean all that up. And then, of course, our lifelong learning initiative, so focusing on our senior community, our adults, providing elements to prevent isolation and just really meet all of those needs kind of wrapped into one. And one of the coolest objectives that we're focusing on this year, we received a grant from Indian Aircraft Hardware to start a calming corner. And so even with our library space being so small, the programming area is usually like very high-focused, over-stimulating toys. And so there's a little corner that the staff had been trying to figure out what to do with. So we came up with this idea of a calming corner. And so the funding is going to go to some sensory seating, some headphones, some manipulatives, just so that there's a space for unique needs. So if someone needs to take a break or they want to sit and read or do anything to kind of help their sensory level come back down, will be one of the new features in the space, so. And so this is kind of my mind and a map. And we've been focusing on each of these initiatives, a lot of the stuff we've already been doing. But then there's all these growth opportunities. And so our hope is that we can continue to expand and have book drop-offs at different locations throughout the community. We did add Mini Marauders preschool this year. So our early literacy programmer comes and does storytimes. We have 17 preschools and daycares that we work with in the area to provide monthly visits to. Our school outreach increased this year. We were doing Lego Club at the elementary schools. We've added middle schools and high school events just this year with the help of Julie and Allison. And then our delivery and outreach, we've worked with Traditions Senior Living for the past two years or so. And now we're starting to add some of those other senior communities. Gateway does a library day and we're adding drop-offs to them soon as well. And then, of course, anything that focuses on the community, all of the growing community events. We're at the markets in Fortville and McCordville, community day celebrations, all kinds of fun stuff like that where we can be visual and interact outside the library. And one of my favorite parts, of course, is always summer reading. So this year's theme, we follow the collaborative summer reading theme for the nationwide theme, which is Color Our World. And all ages can participate. We focus on encouraging families. We want to make it so that if there's families or kiddos that are only here half the season, they can still participate. So we do it on a weekly basis. If they just read any amount of time, we're just trying to encourage and foster that habit. They get to earn a weekly prize. We've partnered with community organizations to offer larger-scale gifts. Doolittle offered a gift card, Fox Garden. So some of the adult-themed stuff, Libby supports us as well. And this year, for winter reading, we actually tried some themed prize packs that went over really well, so we're going to do that again this year. And of course, the best part is that there's no library required. No library card required. And of course, the best part is that there's no library required, no library card required. So we're encouraging people, even if they don't want to sign up for a card or come to the library, they can at least do this with us in the summer. And there's my contact information, a junior guide sheet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, you have a lot of great things happening.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Really neat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashton. Now I'd like to introduce Dave Gray and Tom Singh from the Hancock County Public Library.
There you go. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here with your appointment to our board, Mr. Tom Singh, who's a former board president. So I think he was board president for four years, but it's been a year since he's been president. I'll make it brief, I know you have a lot going on. I always start with funding. We are funded differently than every other library. The two libraries that are funded differently than every other library in the state. So the portion that we get rather than property tax, so we have a property tax replacement, is the blue portion, which would be the old county economic development income tax. So if we were on property tax, we would still receive some income tax, the green part. We'd also get license X size and fit, which is a very small portion. The portion that is our property tax replacement is the blue part, which is about 60% of our budget. And the next slide kind of steps through how that works. It was established in 1999. It's hard to believe, 26 years ago, we had unserved areas in Hancock County. This made all of Hancock County served library-wise. So we served eight townships and then Vernon Township Public Library serves Vernon Township. But our funding is based off property taxes. So obviously, we're watching things at the State House closely as well. So we don't receive any more money than we would on property taxes, just simply a replacement. So both libraries have the same budget process. We can't take additional money from ceded funds at the county level. But it has been a very creative way to fund library service countywide. I'd like to say thank you for continuing to work with us on student cards. Since 2018, we've had all four school systems get a digital card. We have over 2,700 students last year visit one of our libraries to get a physical card. That makes it a lot easier, we can just double-check those. And we had those students check out over 13,000 items and we're working hard to make that even more this year. Just a couple of stats, updates from 2024. We are up about 9%, so we had just over 3,000 new library cards, 8,000 renewals, up 68%. Nearly 500,000 people visited one of our libraries last year. And our circulation is just under a million and that still keeps us at number 12 in the state overall. And of course, with summer reading, one of our busiest times of the year, we had 3,800 participants that read almost 7.5 million minutes. We love to see that. A few electronic resources I'd like to highlight. Libby, Overdrive, it used to be called Overdrive, now it's Libby. We also have Hoopla, which is similar to Libby. However, it has a concurrent usage model. So if you and I wanted to check out one book and we only had one copy, we'd have a wait. But with Hoopla, we can all check out the same title, we pay per use, not per title. We also added newspapers.com this year. We have Brainfuse, Mango and World Book for Kids. We also have a lot more resources as well on our website. I always like to talk about the Imagination Library. It's a partnership with our wonderful community foundation. So we have nearly 2,700 enrolled. And what we say by graduated is that they have actually gone through the program. And if you're not familiar with it, any child in Hancock County aged birth to five can sign up at no cost to them to receive one book per month in the mail. So you could create a library of 60 books for your child when they turn five. And we've had almost 2,700 kids go through the program at this point. You saw that picture at the beginning, that was a drone shot of our main library. We were the two most popular voting sites again. So our main library, we saw just over 12,000 people. And at our Sugar Creek Library, we had almost just over 7,000 people vote. So we had nearly 45% of the county vote at one of our library locations. Last year, I, I put this in my report and we worked with Chris Sicles with Red Nose Studios. And he's a local artist, you've seen probably some of his artwork. He's had his artwork in New York City subways and different places across the country. The Friends of the Hancock County Public Library, which is a separate 501(c)(3), paid for his first permanent art installation at our library in Greenfield. And this year, we added two characters to that, so it's fun, the kids love it. We've had people come from out of state to look at it, but it won an award. So a piece of that display is actually going to travel to New York and be on display for a while. We thought that was pretty neat.
Yeah, that is neat.
A quick project update in 2024, a lot of facilities things, you're probably familiar with that. We replaced the chiller at our main library, two boilers. We do have RFID technology, so we can get things back on the shelves faster, so you can have those. We had to replace a sorter and we replaced all of our self-checks at both locations. It has been almost six years at our Sugar Creek Library, so we had to do a little parking lot maintenance as well. 2025, our two main projects are our main library parking lot and a website redesign. And we're also going to a smaller project. We're installing some remote lockers to try those out at the Eastern Hancock Schools to try to catch the three townships on the eastern side of the county. So those are kind of like your Home Depot, Amazon lockers. You place a hold, we put it, you get notified, you grab it. And as soon as you grab it, the RFID reader realizes that it's gone and it's checked out to you at that point. We also have a drop box like we do at Mount Comfort, so you can return the materials theirs as well. So a list of our library board members. We have one appointment from each of the four school systems. One from the county council, one from the county commissioners, and then one from the Greenfield City Council. And then I also have my office and my cellphone number. If you ever have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate, give us a call. Happy to answer any questions.
Great things, thank you so much.
Outstanding. Our final report is from our intermediate school principal. The principal without a school yet, Ms. Ashley Guston.
Best job ever, right? Principal, no teachers, no kids, just planning, yeah. First, I would like to thank you for hiring me early on. This is not the first time I've opened a building, but I will say that the first semester, I spent learning Mount Vernon, all the systems and processes and procedures, and then building relationships. Second semester, we really got planning and working hard. But I will tell you that I feel really confident opening this building and I appreciate all the time that you've given me. So there are some physical building updates. First, the cafeteria was painted over spring break. And we have some interior signage that's going to say Mount Vernon Marauders, Mount Vernon Intermediate Marauders. There's some signage that's going to happen in the front office. We're updating the doors. And then in the lobby, we have some, a backlit sign that's coming. We surveyed students, fourth and fifth grade students about play. How do they like to play outside and the things that they would like to do? We took that to a planning team and we have some updates coming to the playground. And of course, with Renee's help, the library project has been a big undertaking as well. Staffing. We're taking the core teachers from the elementary, the fifth grade teachers from the elementary and sixth grade teachers from the middle school. Special education teachers, as you know, we've done some transfers of staff and some teachers have been applying. I'm really excited to have both elementary special education teachers and a couple of people from the middle school coming. I think that will be really important as we think about where our students are coming from with that elementary perspective and then where they're going with that middle school perspective. We just finished interviews for a reading and math specialist. We are conducting interviews currently for a multilingual learning teacher. Our related arts, we have STEM teacher coming from the middle school and PE teachers. And then we have some posted positions for those open related arts. Support staff, same thing. We have some people coming from across the district into the building. We also have lots of openings, if you know anybody that would be interested. I'm also thankful that some of our support staff recognize individual student needs and have voluntarily transferred to make that transition for some of our students with special education services, a smooth transition. Programming. So what makes an intermediate an intermediate? First semester, I took the time to go to Sand Creek at Hamilton Southeastern. And then I went to New Powell Intermediate and looked at their schedules, looked at their programming, looked at the band and choir, and we looked at what clubs they offer. I also connected with Westfield, Stony Creek. I received things from Greenfield and really studied what made those buildings an intermediate. And then asked candid questions like what works, what doesn't work. And I feel like we took the best of those things and built a draft bell schedule. With that, there were two things that I felt like an intermediate building needed. That gradual release of responsibility. We built in a passing period for fifth grade and two passing periods for sixth grade. They have a common win time, which is what I need. We'll start our day with 30 minutes. We're meeting individual student needs based off of our CFA data. The way we have built our schedule with passing periods, it allows some flexibility. So if a student has some special needs, they don't necessarily have to stay with the teaming teachers. That bell will allow me maybe to change a student's schedule. Fifth graders will have recess. And then we adopted an organization time from the middle school and that's to meet executive functioning, assignment notebooks, making sure that their locker or cubby is clean. Our teachers will be expected to communicate. So a two-person teaching, teacher team will need to know what each other's doing. So our kids leave at the end of the day with all of their assignments, ready to go. Fifth graders will participate in second steps. They're currently doing that now, so that will migrate over. And then fifth and sixth graders on early release Wednesday will have nurture groups. In addition, fifth grade will experience a two-person teaching team, math and science, ELA and social studies. Sixth grade will have a three-person team, math, ELA, and then a social studies, science. We have factored in our schedule the needs for high ability and those students who receive special education services. Related arts will look very traditional for our fifth grade. They will rotate libraries, STEM, art, PE, like they do in the elementary. So those days will stay the same. For sixth grade, they have the option of band. So really, they have four related arts. If they picked band, that's a year-long commitment. All sixth graders will be required to have at least one semester of PE or wellness. And then they could choose from STEM, art, and then of course, the one they love most is extra PE. Once we get our staff on board, we'll talk about clubs and then our students will participate with middle school athletics. Some of the teacher planning teams, we looked at some of the systems in place across the district. And we looked at behavioral expectations was our first teacher planning team. I threw it out, asked teachers if this is something you're passionate about. Let's meet and let's talk about what, what we want. We're going to do a building-wide house system. Merging all of our students, we know that you may have a best friend in fifth grade. You get to the intermediate and you never really get to see that person because they're in a completely different pod. So we're going to do a house system to build relationships with our staff and students. It takes all of the teachers, it groups them, they'll meet to do kind of like a house meeting. Well, they'll talk about building-wide expectations, they'll do an activity. And they'll get to do, the teachers will get to facilitate something that's themed. Our guidance counselor is currently writing, what does that look like? So February is Kindness Month. And we want those classes as they partner up to do some sort of activity. With building-wide expectations, we wanted to focus on the positive side. And we had took in, the middle school uses Marauder Gold. We're going to do the same thing. It essentially would be a little hall pass. And it's for those students who walk in the hallway the right way. They never get in trouble in the cafeteria. That will be something that they can have special privileges and where they eat in the cafeteria. Maybe they walk one minute early to lunch or have dismissal. Again, that bridge between elementary walking kids and lots of supervision to that gradual release that they get to do some of those things that they are doing well on their own. Teachers voted on life value terms, those are found in all of our buildings. This teacher planning team took those terms and then looked at our classroom management, office referrals, behavior system, and they embedded those. They came up with the acronym, CHARGE, choose, respect, honor, integrity, actively focus, redo, give effort, and embrace challenges. With that acronym, they built in building-wide expectations for all of the following places in the building, hallways, recess, restroom. And we're going to teach those on the first five days of school. So we'll bring fifth grade together for a short convocation for about 30 minutes. We'll talk about what these things mean, probably do a skit and something fun with them. We'll do one every day. To be vertically aligned with the middle school and high school, we talked about the step system. And we really teased out what is a classroom regulated or something that we would expect to be handled in the classroom, isolated minor offenses. It begins and ends with the teacher. They're also going to be able to write a step. So if a student has a repeated minor offense, that they can submit a step. Some major offenses get to skip the step system and they get an office referral. As we're collecting those data points and we're looking at our student needs, we also have that layer of mental health. And our guidance counselor is planning to run small groups and do individual sessions with our students as well as our outside community resources. The second teacher planning team looked at response to intervention, or RTI. We normed what are our expectations for win time, what data will we use, what does this look like? The same thing for organization. And then we talked about each elementary is a little bit different and the middle school is much different. How do we want to look at our data? How frequent do we want to look at our data? How often do we want to group our kids in tier two and tier three? We're finally to a point where we bring those specialists in once they're board-approved and we can start sharing that vision with those two specialists who will be conducting the tier two and tier three. The next teacher planning team was student life. It was what does it look like to be a Mount Vernon Intermediate Marauder? The first thing that we decided to do is bring in fourth and fifth grade from across the district to do a building tour. These fifth grade students from Fortville chose to be building tour guides and answer questions. So they got a leadership opportunity that was really great. We talked about if you're a new student, that's a really hard thing. As a fifth and sixth grade student, what does it look like when you're new? So we have an onboarding process where they will have an adult and a student in the building. What information is important that we give to families and to students right out of the gate? We plan the first days of school, so those convocations. And then how do we celebrate students? We want student of the month, student of the quarter, and then student of the year. And our PTO is really working to support some of those prizes and initiatives. And then what sort of student experiences do we want? Teachers have already put in spirit days, track and field. They really want to do a dance every quarter. And our PTO is going to work with us on that too. Last, it feels like crunch time for sure. So what's to come? We continue to do screening interviews and full interviews to continue to staff the building. Spending lots of time with special populations, transitioning students with high needs, sitting in case conferences, making sure that our schedule, that we can meet their minutes and their accommodations. We have a meet the principal in May. We've planned a staff retreat on the 12th of June to get the, all the intermediate staff together for just a fun day. We're going to have lunch and we're going to go to the Indy Game Show Room just to build those relationships. And I have a full team attending the PLC at Work Conference this summer. And then we're inviting our PTO in in the beginning of July to do a brunch, to meet some of our teachers and to get started.
That's very exciting.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. I know that you'll have back-to-school nights and things like that for the intermediate program. Will you offer a community open house or anything like that prior to those evenings?
That's going to be the meet the principal night.
Oh, that's the meet the principal, okay.
Yep, there'll be a tour and then I'm going to do a presentation about what does it look like and share with families.
Okay, good. I've had some families ask me about that, so that's great.
Yeah.
I love that you're, already got your PTO set up, that's great. And then I love that, I love that you're intentionally working on that release of responsibility because that's a huge step of when a student goes from elementary to junior high, it's such a big thing to then get to do things on there and they don't always handle it well. So I love that you're being intentional about that, to try to teach them the right way to handle themselves.
Yeah, absolutely. So I taught fifth and sixth grade and then I've been a middle school administrator. So I see that gap. I feel like that's been an advantage for me in planning.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to our consent agenda this evening. On the agenda, we have our regular session minutes, personnel report, our claims, construction claims. We also have some construction change orders, monthly fund transfers, one overnight field trip request, many very generous donations from several organizations in our community. We have a call for destruction of records and a, our state board of accounts audit report. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, Ms. Mike Kelly, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any questions regarding consent? Okay. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Let me get through all those. Quite a few on there tonight.
Yeah.
Mr. Alkins, we have our RFP selection for moving services.
Yes, thank you. So giving you three attachments, but the third one comes from our moving and inventory advisors, relocation strategies, who organized the request for proposals from moving companies. So this is to get us all reconfigured for the big move to get the two new buildings up and running. And so the winner, or the low bidder, best, most appropriate bidder, say it correctly, came out to be Guardian Relocation for an amount not to exceed $71,000, which is under budget, under what we anticipated. So with that, I would have the board consider approving Guardian Relocation for our moving services.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alkins. Do I have a motion to accept Guardian as our mover?
I move that we accept the bid from Guardian as our mover for this process.
Okay. Motion by Chad. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan. Any further questions?
No, but I will just say that I've moved a time or two in my 37 years of teaching, and I never had moving instructions as detailed and organized as this. It is quite the organized process. I loved it. It was great. I read every detail. I was so excited about it.
Hopefully, this makes it a little bit easier for our staff.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. I have a motion by Chad and a second by Megan. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Smedley with our school times for 25, 26.
Yes. So also in preparation for the onboarding of the intermediate school next year, in your packet was a proposal for the start and end times for each of our schools next year, all three elementary schools, the intermediate school, the middle school, and the high school, for both the regular schedule and an early release schedule. If you recall, this was, this is actually an excerpt from the presentation that was given to the board last month by Mr. Martin from the Transportation Department. So we're just asking the board to officially approve these schedules.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion to approve the bell schedules?
I'll make a motion to approve the bell schedule as presented.
Motion by Stacy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Megan. Any further questions? I just want to say, again, I was so impressed when they brought it to us via work session, the amount of work and the amount of people involved with doing bell schedules. It's not an easy task by any means, so hats off to all of you that were involved in that. So I have a motion by Stacy and a second by Megan. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
I'm going to call Brooke. Are you, is she presenting?
I'd be happy to introduce. I've asked Mrs. Tharp to come back. She is going to present the 2026-2027 recommendation for you to approve the high school schedule. So the change is 26, 27. Mrs. Tharp?
Okay, thank you. As I presented last month, the high school has been evaluating different building schedules and looking at the advantages and challenges of all of those. We engaged all stakeholders, parents, students, our leadership team, teachers, administrators, and our counselors, and we looked at, like I said, the pros and cons of each type of schedule. We, our goal was to eliminate learning gaps, align our CTE and our dual credit opportunities, provide more flexible scheduling, and provide broader course options for all students, and also obtain our second semester CTE funding, which we currently are not capturing. So after looking at all the different schedules and evaluating those, we have identified the block eight schedule as the schedule that would help us meet all of those needs. And so we're asking tonight for your consideration in approving the block eight schedule for our 26, 27 school year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the blocks, or the block eight schedule for the 26, 27 school year?
I move that we approve the block eight schedule for the 26, 27 school year.
Motion by Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad. Any further questions?
I just agree with what you said with the last thing we had, is the amount of time. This has been something that's been talked about for years. I mean, from the time it started on the board, it was being talked about, even before that. I remember Joe talking about it. So I'm glad it's finally something that's happening, and I appreciate all the work you've done on it, Brooke.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Thank you for involving the staff and the teachers and the students and asking, you know, their opinions on it. And that spoke very highly to me, that this was the change they wanted to see as well. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. I have a motion by Kelly and a second by Chad. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Dr. Parker, would you like to present the grant writer?
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm bringing a recommendation to you for approval tonight. It's a memorandum of understanding with our Mount Vernon Education Foundation. What we are asking to do is to pay our education foundation to support us in writing grants for the school, not necessarily through the Ed Foundation, but directly for our school corporation. The amazing Renee Oldham, you know she's brilliant as an Ed Foundation director, but she also has a great deal of economic development experience. She's an amazing grant writer. She's currently the county school representative on the Hancock County Board of Zoning Appeals. She's well-connected. This plan will pay the education foundation $35,004, don't ask, it's in the MOU, a year on a monthly basis. I believe our terms are that we will recoup those funds after a certain number of grants have been awarded and will, like, I think Mike Harris said it best. He's the president of the Education Foundation Board. Mike Harris said, this is a win-win-win. We feel like everyone's going to win. We do have an out if grant funds dry up. We just stop doing it. And we have a way to, you know, back out of this quickly if we need to do that. My guesstimation is, we're going to see it's one of the smartest financial things we've ever done and going to really support our kids and our school. And I want to personally thank Renee. She's done a lot of work on this. It's something that she and I hatched quite some months ago, and she's worked with her board to get this organized as well, and I'm excited to get it started.
Great. Do I have a motion to accept the grant writer position?
I make a motion that we accept the grant writer position as presented.
Motion by Megan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. It's 2,916, that's per month, and it's $35,004 per year. That's what I said.
Correct. Exactly correct.
Okay, got it.
Very good. Any further questions?
I just want to say, we have an in-house expert who obviously has our best interests at heart and shares the vision for our schools. And so I think it would be crazy for us to not support this. In my day job, we hire someone from the outside to do this for us, and it's very hard to instill in them the vision that we have as they're going after these grants for us. And so to already have this person here, I think this is just a wonderful opportunity, so.
Absolutely. My only recommendation is that we clone Renee, because we need her around 24/7 around here.
Pressure's on, Renee.
Okay. I have a motion by Megan and a second by Stacy. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Last but not least, we, no, excuse me, is our board member reports. Fortville RDC, Stacy Nielsen.
I was unable to attend the Fortville RDC last month, and they meet again this week.
Okay, great. Cumberland RDC, Kelly Freeman.
I did attend. There was no new business. We just approved some bills, about a 15-minute meeting, so.
Okay. Hancock County RDC, Mr. Gray.
The meeting was last Thursday. They approved a $100,000 reimbursement to Mount Vernon at that. Only other real topics, it just continued conversation in the RDC, mostly road improvements. One interesting thing that came up was a conversation in our district around the Walmart Center, but also the Mount Comfort roundabouts. And as much as everybody hates them, there have been zero fatalities on Mount Comfort Road since they opened, and it's been a long time since the county's been able to say that. So it's just kind of a, you don't stop and think about the, that impact when they're doing things. So be prepared for a roundabout everywhere.
That's good news. The McCordell RDC, I was not able to attend. We had a new grandbaby that week. I know you've already all heard that from me, but I was a little preoccupied with that. So they gave me a pass this month for that. And then Megan with the Education Foundation.
The Education Foundation did meet. I did attend, and it was all things wrapped up, tied up for the gala, which was a huge success and a ton of fun this past weekend. So thank you, Renee. Great job.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Parker, do you have any other announcements you'd like to share with us?
Just a couple. We are in our seventh to the last week of the school year, and this year is absolutely flying by. We are participating in staff appreciation lunches. Cabinet will go to each building the week of May the 5th. Actually, it ends up the following Monday. We need six school days to do it. We'll be flipping burgers and cooking dogs, and we're bringing cheese this year, so people are really excited. So we very much enjoy doing it and engaging with the staff as they partake in what we prepare for them that day. And then we have landed on, it's not been formally published, but our ribbon cutting for the new Fortville Elementary School on May the 15th. We are also looking at, after school and in the early evening, allowing folks to come in, our staff first, and then public if they want to do a self-guided tour of the building that same day. That way, people don't feel like they have to leave work to get into the building and check out the new cool space. So we're excited about that. And of course, our amazing Maria Bond will be publishing that all over the place. And with that, that's my announcements.
Thank you. I know we're all very much looking forward to May 15th and being a part of that ribbon cutting with the elementary. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Megan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. Any further discussions? All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carried, 5:00, and meeting adjourned at 8:03 PM. Thank you.